I was the last one here this morning.
And the first one here this afternoon.
I want that to reflect on all records. Thank you, go ahead. Mr. President?
Sorry.
So much for those records. Let's move ahead to briefing, discussion, possible decision on Willow Pond Stormwater Management Facility. With us, I guess Ms. Gail Ingalls, Bureau Chief, Resource Management, Colleen Enzer, Watershed Grants Analyst, be with us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It is a good afternoon.
It is. It's sunny and it's gonna be warm this weekend, so I hear, so can't get much better, yeah. So we're here this afternoon to request your approval to submit an application to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for the Willow Pond Stormwater Management Pond retrofit. And Colleen Enzer's here to explain a little bit about the project.
All right. Good afternoon. So we're here today, as Gail mentioned, to request your approval to submit the application for $1,900,000 for the Willow Pond Project to the Department of Natural Resources Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Base Trust Fund. As a little bit of a refresher, we're awaiting notice from the Maryland Department of the Environment's Bay Restoration Fund for the $1,787,516 that we applied for, for this grant as well. And we expect to have a decision in April, and public comments are available in May. So that would also be supporting the Willow Pond Project. As a background, this was an existing pond that was constructed in the 1940s, and it was retrofitted in 1991 with a corrugated metal riser and outfall pipe. It is still shallow and only has an average depth of two feet. So with the proposed retrofit project, we would consolidate runoff and remove three existing detention basins, and we would provide water quality, 1,700 linear feet of stream channel reconnection and protection, and would restore the natural geometry. Additionally, it would provide 10 years of quantity management. It would deepen the pond, provide additional habitat, and decrease thermal impacts receiving stream, which is beneficial for the trout. Additionally, it would provide a community pathway to Sullivan Road and Sunshine Way, which is a key connection for the existing trails, neighborhoods, and community pond. Specifically, that would be 2,800 linear feet in length. And then ultimately, it would reduce nutrient sediment loads, which is a requirement of our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems permit.
Is that a major trout stream?
No.
Do we have trout in there?
No.
No, okay.
Further than that.
Just curious.
Go on, different subject here.
If we get both these grants, we'll have more, just looking at this, more money than the full projects on the cost? Are we expecting to get the both grants? And if we do, what do we do with the excess money? Not that there's a problem with that, but...
This is, yeah, this is the first year we've been able to apply for the MDE Bay Restoration Fund. Previously, it was only available for sewer projects, so we're not sure, but we're hopeful. We've been in contact with MDE, and so far, we've only received positive feedback, so we're hoping to get that grant. And we do have a pretty good track record with the Coastal and Atlantic Base Trust Fund. If you recall, we received almost $4 million last year for the municipality projects for this particular fund, so we are optimistic.
So the excess money...
Any excess money will be returned back to one of the people. We won't ask for as much money.
Okay.
We'll just ask for the money that's project-related.
Okay. All right. Keep it with it.
Remove the Board Commissioners to approve the submitted of the application for the Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Base Trust Fund.
Second. Motion made, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, we need to move ahead to discussion, decision, transit buses, lease or purchase. And with us, Casadee Director of Public Works, Dave Reese, Deputy Director, Department of Public Works, and Mike Myers, Bureau Chief, Bureau of Purchasing. Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon. Commissioners are here today for further discussion and possible purchase of spare buses for our transit program. Our program has been operating with no spares vehicles to date. In times of major maintenance repairs and accident repairs, we've not had to cut services, but we've come very close many times, thanks to ride with us staff on the road, you know, being on the road with cars and vans. Many of the board members have expressed concerns with regards to cutting of services and the chances to be greatly reduced if we had a fleet of spare vehicles. In the past year, just to give you an update, we've had five engine, full engine replacements on the, on our current buses, and each one is out of service typically five to seven days during those replacement times. Many of our buses have been involved in accidents, unfortunately, and with an average out-of-service days of about 10 days for each one of those. At the same time, their current aged fleet buses are out of service for three-plus days because they don't typically come in just for a simple oil change, they need other work. And you add this to times where other vehicles are off for accidents or vehicles are for engine repairs, then you have multiple vehicles now out of service. So we came to you last week and presented both lease options and purchase options. As many of you remember, there was a specific FTA/MTA Transit Guidelines above and beyond the federal procurement process that's needed to implement for the procurement of buses. And after further consulting with MTA, since the lease option presented is only for used buses, they don't meet the FTA/MTA guidelines for the procurement process, and it'd be very difficult to add those to our fleet, considering they are used, and again, after a year, would have, after a short amount of time, be turning them back in. So today, we're here asking the board for approval to move forward with the purchase of four spare buses. If the board chooses to move forward with the purchase, we need to approve the transfer of unallocated funds to the general fund for the purchase of these four buses. And what we'd be looking at as a total, would be for the cost of the buses and the one-time costs of tablets, computers for each one of the buses. For the four, it'd be $235,424. So please note that we hope to have the request transferred of unallocated to be less than, you know, never mind. That's another note for the takeout.
I feel like I'm asking you Groundhog Day questions, like we've covered this ground before, and if we did, I apologize, but...
No problem.
One question. One of the reasons we're being forced into this is because we've had buses ordered through the Maryland Transit Authority for the last three years that are backlog because of contractual problems, and they never delivered, right? Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. I'm gonna say yes or no, because part of the issue is we have, we have an aging fleet. So we have, well, many of our fleet are in excess of 200, some over 250, and we have actually one over 300,000 miles at this time.
Okay.
The buses that we have that are from the FY14, 15, and 17 that are coming in are just replacements. So this would be, half of our fleet will be replaced with, from, with old aged buses, high mileage buses, with new buses, with two of the, two of that procurement being for expansion of services, none will be spares.
Okay, that makes sense.
So it's a one-to-one change.
That makes sense, but I want to, one step further. So if we had, if we had received the buses in 14 and 15, would we be still ordering these today?
We would still have no spares, and the other, the remaining of our fleet would continue to, to age and to get high mileage and require additional services.
The chain of questions, what I really mean to ask you is, given that, I think we're gonna approve the purchase of these, I suspect, are we going to cancel four existing buses that are on backlog order?
No, because those are strictly just replacements of current buses we have in the, for services, for current service.
Mr. Wancher shaking your head.
No, I, we're not canceling.
Yes, that's...
Yeah, that's not the intent of this. I think we're missing the point that we may have just went straight over, is the fact that we have no spares.
None.
And, and, you know, I applaud everybody from, from fleet to, to you guys, to, to the folks that ride with us, you know, operating that, operating out there with the fact that there are no spares is just absurd to me. I don't, I don't know how we've done it. It's, I'm glad that they've been able to do it, but I think we need, now, my only question is why four? Why not two?
At this point, we'll take any spare.
I mean, there has been some question as to the amount.
Right.
And it's, you know, 235,000 or whatever...
Right.
You know, out of reserve for contingency, and I, I get that.
Right. No, fully understand that, and we're also trying, we're also putting into our, the ATP, the Annual Transit Program, request for federal approval for some spare buses to be added in FY18. That gets submitted tomorrow to FTA and MTA, goes through the approval, you know, and it still has to be approved by them, and if approved, we might be, and if they approve that line item, they maybe will, you know, we don't know if they're guaranteed or not, but we put in a request for additional spares to be purchased in FY18, but we probably won't see them till late eight, 2018, early 2019, if they were to be approved.
Okay.
Our, per the, from MTA Lots Manual, we, you know, we should be operating with about five to seven spares, those, you know, ideally...
I get those numbers, but...
Right.
Have we ever had the correct ratio of spares?
Not in my, not that I've been aware of for years now.
I don't even think we had them back when the other company was running the, we didn't have that ratio of spares at all.
What are the, what are the odds of us getting new buses per the contract on time this time? Because I've heard possibly July, I've heard September, I mean, are we, are we finally on track to see new buses?
As we understand to date, we have a couple of the replacements that, and they said a few is the word that they've used, could be one or three, we don't know, or four, but they've said we may get a few of these buses in, in the first round of manufacturing of, of buses in June.
Because when your manufacturing of buses, sorry, when your manufacturing of buses is not just 18 for Carroll County, if they, if they have a lot of 25 of them, three will go to a different county, and so on and so on, and they keep on continuing to make them.
Right.
So we may not see our full 16 until the end of the year, maybe even begin in next year.
And they've not committed to us any dates or any time, any suggestions, if, they hope still by the end of the year, we'll see the rest of the 14, 15, and 17 buses coming in by the end of the year, but that's, it's a hope at this point, we don't have any...
So we've been given no guarantee whatsoever on any delivery date at this time?
Right. We know they're coming, but we don't have delivery dates.
Wouldn't they already have to be in production?
They are in production now, but like, like I said, they may, they may make 30 of them at a time, and 30 of them may be going distributed to all 23 counties and...
But we don't know what the production distribution's gonna be?
We don't. Not to this point.
They're working on multiple different states at the same time, and they, then they run with one chassis, then they run to the next chassis, and they could do like 25 each.
But I thought once the order was placed, that we would know where we were in the sequence.
Again, they gave us, they gave us a, not really detail, but they gave us, you know, we may see a couple in May, and then a few more in July, and that's what we basically had the answer from.
And if a bus is a replacement bus, does it require, if you get two buses in that are replacement buses, and let's say, for whatever reason, the buses that are intended to replace happen to be still running, do you have to take those buses out of service, or could you use those as spares?
We can use, we've checked with MTA, we could use, if we had a 300,000 mile bus and we took that and replaced it, we can, we can hold on to it for a short amount of time, and we have not got a definite, you know, we can't use it forever, but they understand this is the same situation many other jurisdictions are running into around the state. So in the meanwhile, in order to have some vehicles around, because of, again, the delays are happening, it's not just for Carroll County, it's for every county in multiple states, we can utilize some of those, those buses. But again, you're, you know, you have a 300,000 mile bus that, who knows what the drive train and what's, what other things may need to be replaced, transmissions, rear ends, et cetera, or what the frame, you know, at any time, if that does not meet the criteria for, to be safely on the roadway, or expenses get extremely high on the repairs, at that point, we'd lose that option out in the field. But yes, we can use that.
Make a motion that the Board of Commissioners concur with the award and authorize the Bureau of Purchasing to move forward with the purchase of four transit buses from FR Conversions, a total amount of $230,344. Also add, I like this coming from FR Conversions, a local Carroll County company. Yeah. Use the morning bid. No, you're second?
A couple of clarifications here for me. First of all, it's gonna be more than that. Right now, we're just approving the purchase of the buses. Do we have to do separately the accessories that go with it? Is that part of this package, or how are we doing that, Mike?
You don't have to make an approval on those, because accessories are about 300 and some dollars for a tablet, and another hundred for the mount, so it's, it's around $400, and then you'll have to get the wrapping, but it doesn't amount to anything that you need to approve separately.
Okay.
We have term contracts separately for all that, and it's a low dollar amount, it doesn't require your approval.
Okay. Was there any, I'll second it for, for, for a matter of discussion.
Can't be worried for a second.
I'll second it. I, you know, a couple of things, and Commissioner Howard, I think you were going in a direction that I think...
I want to make clear, I'm not gonna be voting on this, like...
Well, I understand that, but, but my point is, I think you were going in a direction here that I wanna maybe clarify.
I wasn't going in any direction, just trying, trying to understand.
You know, typically, when you get something new, you replace the old, but keep the old for a spare.
Typically, with, with the transit buses, you get a replacement, that other bus immediately goes up for, goes back, and it gets sold, and the proceeds go back to, to the FTA and MTA. In this case, they're allowing us to hold on to them for, and they have not given us a set amount of time, but they're allowing us to hold on to them for a little bit of time, until some of these other buses come in, in case we, you know, again, we've had five engine replacements so far. If it's a difference of, we hold on a couple of those to, if another engine goes, we're, we'd route, we could utilize one of those buses versus having to put $10,000 into the new, the new engine.
In the future, though, we wouldn't have to do that with these, with these four buses, because we pay for these buses. If, I don't know how many years down the road, five or six, ten, whatever happens to be down the road, these buses are due to be put out because they've had 300,000 miles or whatever, we can hold on to these, because these are our buses, we don't have to give them to anyone else.
Right.
Okay.
Okay?
On this idea of other costs, you don't have to do anything about it today, but when we tackle the FY18 budget, there are additional operating costs associated with having more buses that we will have to take care of. And I don't, I'm not prepared really to talk about it in detail, but I think we had an estimate of about $100,000 a year. That would be, you know, insurance, maintenance, gas, you know, all the things that come along with having another vehicle.
Always, Mr. Sunshine.
I, I find that rather high, but that could be, I mean, for four buses, you're talking about 100 grand for operating for a year?
Like I said, I, I think I remember that number being mentioned, I'm really not prepared right now to tell you it is that, because, but even if it's not 100,000...
I know that there's cost, I know, it just sounds really high.
And we, yeah, we, and last week, we did present on, on these numbers, and again, for four buses, what we have in there is $88,400. That would include fuel for full-time use of these four buses. If they're be used for full-time use, it'd be $6,300. Maintenance costs on average for yearly maintenance of vehicles is approximately $8,100.
They're, they're new, though, Jeff.
And that, yeah, that'll be, that'll be lower.
Okay.
Because they are new.
We utilize them.
Yeah, the only thing we have to go by right now is our old fleet.
All right.
So newer fleet will be a lot less.
Okay, do they come with a warranty of any kind from, from the manufacturer?
Usually, they're, they're the basic warranty, as you get one with other vehicles.
Yeah, three or 36,000 miles, of the typical.
Okay.
And different components have different warranties, whether it's time...
I appreciate the fact that you're shooting high, I always like that, that's good, you know, but, but I, you know...
And, yeah, and insurance right now is $7,500 per vehicle. Again, we've discussed if they allow legit, you know, through the state legislation right now, I had a, yeah, lost me there. Through the legislation right now, if it gets approved, we may be able to use legit as our insurance carrier for these transit vehicles, could create, you know, could cut the insurance costs in half, but again, we're utilizing the current numbers of $7,500.
Okay.
And then we also added $200 per year as part of the tablet replacement, the computer replacements that happen about every two years, we have to replace the tablets, so we put in there as another added value, you know, added number of 200 a year for that.
And Jeff was better prepared than, than I was, but the big thing, I just want, I didn't want you to be surprised when we sit down to do the, the budget and say, we need to add funding for, for these. So we'll work out exactly what number we need to put in there, but there'll be something.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Fours and one abstain?
One abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
What was your motion?
To purchase four.
Purchase four from FR Conversions.
Out of curiosity, how are y'all paying for them?
Well, we're gonna have to transfer the funds.
Transfer money from the unallocated money.
Right.
There you go. We'll have to come back next week for that. We'll have another item for that.
I thought we did that immediately when you do things like this. Okay. All right, what's the ETA on these?
It was 30 to 60 days, I'm trying to think exactly, but it'll happen within two months.
Okay.
Wow. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
I wish I was director when you guys are commissioner. I wish I was your director now. I wish I was director now.
They presented a good case for this. We don't have them.
Okay.
Okay, we have a briefing, discussion, decision on bid approval for tennis and basketball court resurfacing. Mr. Jeff Daggettson, Mike Myers on line.
Great, well, the county operates a couple tennis and basketball courts at both Sandy Mount and Deer Parks. They're aging and need of repair, so we went out to bid to repave them. We received seven bids, and the lowest bidder was the American Asphalt Paving Company in the amount of $147,510. So we'd like to go ahead and award the work to them.
This one was a picture you showed yesterday.
Yes, this was one of the pictures you showed the other day. Courts are in disrepair. We've had issues, in particular, Deer Park with cracks over the years, so this is not simply just resurfacing, this is taking it up, putting down new blacktop, then new paint and surfacing over top. We'll also be putting lines down, not only for tennis, but for pickleball as well.
How many courts is this?
I'm sorry?
How many courts of tennis and basketball?
It's two tennis courts and one basketball court at each site.
Oh, at each site, okay.
Yes. So this is for both locations, Sandy Mount Park and Deer Park.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
There's a huge disparity between the low bids and the...
The first four are very competitive.
Right.
The seventh bid just had trouble filling out the bid form correctly, there was several mathematical errors, they had several attempts to correct, and didn't, and then the other two were a little bit high.
Okay, well, my point is...
But that reflects on workload, I think, the actual job.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that it is indeed, you know, take up and then put back down instead of cover.
Correct.
Because that will work, so, okay.
Okay. Motion made, second.
By, by the way, the funding for this is already in place?
Funding is in place, and this project fits within the existing funds in that budget.
Okay.
We gonna break them in with a little two-on-two, or...
You should do that.
You wanna go, do you?
I do.
All right. Okay.
I'd like to see that game.
Should we reserve their horseshoe team? I don't like his head.
I'd like to see that game.
As part of our effort to generate revenue, we'll be selling tickets to the...
I just wanna, I just wanna make it clear, in the fifth grade, I scored the winning basket in the city championship in Revere, Massachusetts, as my, as my basketball coach was yelling, "Oh, no, not him," when the ball got inbounded, missed his son, who was an excellent basketball player, and I was playing my mandatory two minutes, picked up the ball, closed my eyes, and scored the winning basket, so, just, you know.
Commissioner Howard, that was 45 years ago.
My eyes have been closed ever since.
Is that the last game you ever played?
The last game I ever played.
Go out on top.
But the record still stands.
Now, just, as this challenge goes on...
Wow.
Commissioner Fraser and I had a horseshoe team.
Let's not talk about that.
We got in with, he convinced me to get into this tournament.
I thought he was good.
They're all professionals.
It was, it was not pretty.
It was not pretty. Anyway, do we have a, can we vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's enormous.
We should have a two-on-two game now.
Okay. This, while we still have these two on line, a briefing, discussion, and decision on Bear Branch Nature Center totlot, and I think we had a little preview to this yesterday, some of us, so...
Yes. The county received proposals for the totlot up at the Bear Branch Nature Center, it's a new addition. We got three proposals, and the lowest bidder and the highest ranked proposal was Cunningham Recreation, the amount of $147,092.68. So we'd like to go ahead and award the contract, the Cunningham Recreation for the installation of the totlot.
And this totlot has different things in it, rocks and trees, and a little different than most of them.
Yes, the setting's a little different up at Bear Branch Nature Center. We have a natural play area there now, which has a pond and some trees where kids will climb over, so we wanted equipment that would blend in nicely with that. The equipment is designed basically for ages five to 12, and it's unfortunately, a little bit more expensive when you try to get that natural look. It's not gonna be the very bright neon colors that you typically see at a school site. Those playgrounds are great, they work, but that really wouldn't complement what we have in place up at Bear Branch. You may also remember that we had a fundraising campaign, there's county money through the capital budget here, but we also worked with the Friends of Oshawa Bear Branch Advisory Council, we had a lot of citizen donations. Probably the most memorable was one from the younger sibling of a program registrant that took their tooth fairy money and put it in the pot to help pay for the playground. So we're gonna try to bring that person back when it comes time for ribbon cutting.
I think so.
Yes, with, with safety scissors for that one.
I hope we're the tooth back by now. Okay, so we're here, motion on this?
Yeah, I, I'll make that motion to can authorize the Bureau of Purchasing to move forward with the Bear Branch Nature Center totlot project.
Second. Motion made, second. Further discussion?
The financing for this is also already in place.
Yes, money's in place.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bear Branch is off the line. A discussion, decision, request for signatures for the 17 Consolidate Transportation Program Priority Letter. Ms. Linda Eisenberg, Bureau Chief, Comprehensive Planning, and Mary Lane, Comprehensive Transportation Planner. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So this should be all, old hat by now, you've done this for the last several years. We briefed you on the county priority letter on March 7th, so today, we're just here to go over it and answer any final questions that you may have regarding it. Again, this is the top state transportation priorities for the county, which includes our state highways, county trails, and county transit projects. Just a little bit of our timing and coordination, we began starting this letter in January. We work with Public Works, Economic Development, and Wrenken Parks to get their input in on the letter, and to make any changes that they feel would bring the letter more up-to-date annually. We actually had a meeting with those agencies in February, just again, to review the letter and make sure we've included all of their comments that they have to date. And then the county submits this letter to the state in April, and it's kind of a weird cycle, but then it's for the tour in the fall, so this year's letter will actually go before the legislature next year for them to approve the Consolidated Transportation Program at the following year. So that's kind of the cycle that we're on, and again, we'd like to get this letter to So that's kind of the cycle that we're on, um, and again, we'd like to get this letter to, um, Maryland Department of Transportation with the signatures, um, in the April months. Phil Hager, um, who is our Director and Legislative Liaison, um, will work on, uh, the delegation while he is in Annapolis to get, um, any signatures or letter of support they would like to, um, give to him at that time. So again, our top three projects for capacity enhancing are Maryland thirty-two, Maryland twenty-six south to the Carroll County line, Maryland ninety-seven, which is the north portion from Bachman's Valley Road, um, from Maryland one forty-two Bachman's Valley Road, and Maryland twenty-six, which is, uh, Maryland thirty-two east to the Liberty Reservoir. Um, just to give you a little bit of update of where these projects stand, um, again, five million dollars for improvements have been, um, allocated for Maryland thirty-two. When the readiness center, um, if and when, or when that time is that it will develop, there will be, um, intersection and upgrades to thirty-two at that, at that particular intersection. The planning and environmental linkages that was done for the, the section of thirty-two from twenty-six, uh, to the Howard County line, that study has been completed, we have not received a draft yet from State Highway Administration, it's still in internal review. That study will have further recommendations for what needs to be done along that stretch of thirty-two. The PAL study, as it's referred to, is the precursor to a NEPA study, which is federally required when you do large transportation projects like this and federal funds, um, are allocated to it. And again, here is, uh, the orange line represents, uh, the corridor for thirty-two and the improvements that we're seeking. And then this was, uh, just an image of the governor's announcement about, uh, the planning and environmental linkages study that's currently completed and in draft form. The next project was Maryland ninety-seven Bachman's Valley, uh, to Maryland one forty in Westminster, um, working with Public Works. Um, they have told us that it is adverti- uh, the project is scheduled to be advertised this April, so that's moving forward. And again, that's all outlined in the letter. And again, here is the corridor and then the, um, advertised portion here at the interchange. Uh, Maryland twenty-six, Maryland thirty-two east to the reservoir, um, not much has really moved on this, and this is, uh, as far as that we, as much information as we have to date, again, because it's our third priority and we haven't, um, done, done much more with this particular project in recent years. So again, the project is the county's top priority for final engineering and land acquisition, um, and then the scope is to widen this from four to six lanes and, uh, provide access to current and future employment centers in the twenty-sixth quarter is the intent of this, um, upgrade on twenty-six. And then here is the alignment from the reservoir to thirty-two. Also, we have three urban reconstruction or streetscape projects that are underway, Maryland thirty in Hampstead, Maryland thirty-one in New Windsor, and Maryland eight fifty-one in Sykesville.
Has that Maryland thirty award been, uh, bid been awarded yet?
Um, so the project, um, was advertised and bids have been received and they are currently being evaluated. We don't know the outcome of those bids yet.
Okay.
So that is for the Maryland, um, Hampstead Main Street, just for the record. So again, that, this is the project from North Woods Trail, uh, north in Hampstead. Um, the New Windsor Streetscape Project, um, this is from, uh, New Windsor Main Street to High Street. Uh, the project will include improvements to sidewalks, enhancements to bicycle and pedestrian accessibility, as well as roadway improvements. And the project would be coordinated with the replacement, um, of water lines and would have a positive, uh, economic impact on the town. And the orange again delineates the scope of the project. And eight fifty-one in Sykesville, um, a public hearing was held in May of twenty sixteen and both the town and county sent letters of participation to MDOT indicating joint support for this particular project. The concept has been completed for this project, but it is not currently funded for design, so we're seeking to make sure that it moves to the next level, which would be design, um, of this project.
Linda, that project, um, I know was one that there was a fair amount of coordination, it was attempting to be done, um, to line up with some utilities projects that we had in saying, um, well, under, under that roadway, really. And I know that there was some discussion about whether or not that was still on the same timetable or not. Are those projects still aligned from a timetable standpoint, do we think?
Um, what did Gary say?
He said they are.
Yep, we worked with Gary Dine, he said yes.
Okay, so if they are, it's really imperative that we get this design money, otherwise, you know, we're gonna have money out of sync potentially in what we're doing to address the utilities issues, right?
Um, to the best of my knowledge, yes, that would be the case, and so again, we're, we're gonna continue to push this forward and, um, perhaps letters of support from the delegation regarding this to continue to move it for design would be imperative at this point.
Okay, what about like, I mean, assuming we get my, um, letters from the town and things like that as well, right?
Again, the Westminster Trailblazer Hub is still our top project for capacity enhancing for the transit hub. However, we do also recognize, um, the nature of the bus situation and we do have the Transit Preventative Maintenance and Vehicle Replacement also, which was a new addition to the letter that we originally set up. This is typically covered under the, uh, lots program that MTA provides within the Consolidated Transportation Programs budget, but we just wanted to emphasize the importance of this again, um, in this letter. So the original letter that was sent up last week, um, after working with, uh, Public Works, again, they really felt strongly it needed to be put in again for this year, so we made sure that there was a bulleted point, um, in the letter as well, um, for this.
Just to refresh, what is the transit hub?
Um, this was something that was put forward years ago by Public Works. Um, it's a project to put in a hub, um, in the Westminster area for the Trailblazer system, to have like a ticketing station and, um, a central parking area for riders as well as a central area for, um, the Trailblazers themselves. Um, it's something that is in the long-range transportation plan for the region, the maximize twenty forty. However, um, it is something that we have been talking with Public Works about and kind of reevaluating, um, the particular project. But given how these projects move forward, having it in the letter doesn't dilute any of the other needs for capacity enhancing or the trail, uh, the Transit Preventative Maintenance and Vehicle Repair.
Is this a bus station?
Uh, more or less is my understanding of what was put forward.
This is also for, I'm sorry.
And passenger can get off into a warm or cool climate and wait for the next bus and that type thing.
Right, that was my understanding, and also it was kind of a hub for where the, um, Hampstead Manchester, when that particular loop, uh, makes it to Westminster and then from, uh, the Freedom Eldersburg area into Westminster, it'd be a central location where the, also the Tawney Town Loop. All of them would kind of join up in the central locations, that way if you needed to switch to a new line that, in the future, that would be the availa- the availability to do that would happen at this hub. But again, this is a long range, we're talking, uh, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years in the future, depending on when the time is right and funding is available. But, and that's the purpose of the CTP as well as the Long Range Transportation Plan. Um, and again, we still have our two top trail projects that have been, uh, state-funded, the Governor Frank Brown Trail. Um, again, there is still no, um, update on that, again, it's really dependent on the readiness center. Um, there is a planning level alignment, I know, uh, Recreation and Parks, um, is really excited to move forward since they have a state bikeways grant. But until we hear more about the readiness center and what the final plans are for that, um, that is still on hold, but it is still our top priority for trails projects. Um, as well as the Bennett Surf, uh, Trail Extension, which is in the Westminster area. And here is the proposed trail alignments for the Governor Frank Brown Trail and the Eldersburg area and the proposed alignments of the Bennett Surf Trail. Some of it is already existing, so it would just be connecting existing segments to one another to have a contiguous network, um, in Westminster. And again, that's put for by Recreation and Parks.
So if we developed an alternative plan for the trail around the readiness center, because it really was, it was going right through the readiness center, wasn't it, at the last meeting we had?
It goes through the readiness center, it's sort of backyard.
Property, right.
And, um, they haven't finalized their plans, um, and so we, we haven't, we have a sense of, we know what the property they own, but we don't know exactly where they're going to be and, um, what they'll allow us to do.
I mean, could we? Okay.
Steep slopes.
Very steep slopes.
Gotta say that slowly that come into play, and so, um, there have been some other preliminary ideas of where it could go. Exactly where the readiness center will be will determine which avenues we go.
Correct.
I mean, have we considered trying to redesign the, the trail around just property that the readiness center doesn't own? So that we don't have to?
At this time, Recreation and Parks has not laid out any alternatives, um, for the particular alignment around this section. Again, I think they're really waiting to see, um, what will happen, will, it's a big determination because it's such a large property and the trail is so big and how it needs to navigate through there. And I think, as Roberta said, due to the steep slopes, there aren't a lot of options, uh, to circumvent the readiness center altogether. And there's also a stream that goes, um, in that, through that particular area that make it, um, particularly problematic.
So we're gonna be able to do it, or should we, I mean, this is our highest priority?
It, it's still our hope, and I know that, um, Recreation and Parks would like to see it move forward, so, I think-
What's the timeframe for the, for the readiness center?
As I understand, um, it's, uh, at the federal level at this point, where, um, funding and plans are in their hands, so.
And again, they're above local land use authorities, so they don't necessarily have to coordinate with us. We did have this coordination meetings early on, um, in twenty fifteen, but since then, we have not had, um, any information from them to this determination.
They gave us a plan that day, didn't they? They gave us a design, because we had, I remember the discussion about, well, couldn't we run through your readiness center? And General Singh was pretty, pretty adamant that that was not gonna be to their standard of security, which I, I appreciate. So, I mean, it seems like at that point, shouldn't we be working on an alternative? I mean, unless we just, is, is there some question that the readiness center's gonna go there?
I'm, I'm, to the best of my knowledge, it is still going there. If you'd like, I can, uh, go back through some of my notes, look at some of the contacts and try to reach out and see.
Say, if we know it's going there, I mean, I think we're not gonna be able to infringe on their property, so, I think if we gotta at least-
We could have, um, Jeff update you on, at us, or on, on where that stands, I think he probably knows better what, uh, uh-
Yes.
Since he's looked at and things, um, so we'll, we'll do that.
Absolutely. And I also have a contact, yeah, for, for some of the planners that are from the Army National Guard, I can also check with them to see if there's any additional information they can share today.
Thanks.
They just may know enough that we could at least adjust our thinking accordingly, you know?
So unless there's any other further direction, we'll send a clean copy again up for your signatures, unless there's any addition or changes you'd like to see to the letter.
One of the things we talked about for the winding of thirty-two was the idea of reaching out to Fort Meade, could we do that?
Um, I, I believe I was gonna receive a contact, but I don't have a contact for the Fort Meade area, so I'd be more than happy to if you, someone can provide that to me.
Uh, if you reach out to Vivian, his name is Chad, he's the Public Information Officer, and he'll communicate with Colonel Wrecker, who's the Garrison Commander.
Okay, and would you be looking for a letter of support from Fort Meade for that?
Yeah, I mean, I think Fort Meade's been, been making the argument from the other end of thirty-two.
Gotcha.
We sent them a copy of last year's letter so that they could include that in their discussions, but obviously, the more people that recognize, you know, they're trying to move staff safely in and off the, on and off the installation, but a lot of those folks are, are coming from here, more north of here, accessing thirty-two, so I think it makes the argument stronger.
Absolutely, I'll be certainly, I'll, I'll do that, I'll be more than happy to do that today and reach out.
Excellent.
Okay. Is there other discussion? Do you need us, do we, you need a motion on this?
Yes.
First page.
I, just real quick too, I think you neglected to point out that there are three future projects too that you have, you know, identified on here that-
Certainly, so there are three future projects that were our, our long, long-range, um, projects that we have in the letter as well. And that is Maryland one forty Sullivan Road to Market Street, um, Maryland thirty Abell Road to Cape Horn Road, and then Maryland four, one forty at Maryland ninety-one. These are also in our highway needs inventory and have been longstanding projects, uh, for capacity enhancement and reconstruct, um, in Carroll County as well.
Right, and the way that this works typically is if one of these other projects gets done, these would move up then?
Yes.
Unless one of us has another brighter idea.
Absolutely, and that's what we would like to see, as these projects inch forward.
That's happened before.
We'll inch everything forward.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right, I move that the Board of Commissioners sign it forward, the Transportation Plan Letter to the MDOT, uh, in whatever manner that it's done.
And, and I'll second that, but I do have a question. Is it us signing it, or do we have the extended family signing it?
So what we've done, to simplify the process, is we have the Board of County Commissioners sign the letter. Um, various jurisdictions do it in various ways. Um, and we've, we have found working with you all is the easiest method of signing the letter. Then what, uh, Mr. Hager has been doing is going to, uh, the delegation and asking for additional letters of support to attach-
Okay.
-for these projects, given that our delegation is very spread and we really just have a core group within Carroll County, um, as well.
Okay.
So if that still suffices for this year, that would be the course of action.
Sure.
Motion's made, second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving ahead, do we have any public comment today? No? Okay, uh, let's go into, uh, approval of minutes. If you look at the first one, March seventh, uh, I think Commissioner Rothschild, you had a change here, it's, uh, noted and removed in addition, uh, to number five.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we move to Thursday, March sixteenth.
Motion to approve.
That's a tough one. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Let's go ahead to agendas. Wednesday, March twenty-ninth. What happened to Tuesday?
Nothing, Monday and Tuesday, I think.
Uh, yeah, uh, Fort Meade Alliance, Commissioner Howard at seven-thirty, ten o'clock, the Maryland Association of Counties Subcommittee Meeting, Commissioner Rothschild, and then he'd be joined by Commissioner Wance for the, uh, luncheon for the, uh, Mako, uh, in Annapolis. We have Carroll Community College Board Meeting at four-thirty with Commissioner Wance. And six o'clock, Carroll County Chamber Commerce Outstanding Teacher Awards Program, Westminster High School, Commissioner Weaver and Fraser.
I'll, I'll be in attendance to that too, so I'll make sure that that's on air, cause that's, gets into-
Okay.
Bad territory.
Uh, on Thursday, March thirtieth, we have, uh, recommended buzz presentation, uh, for four hours with, uh, Ted Seleski. And that afternoon, we have presentation from Magic and request for funding from Dr. Wack, uh, briefing and pace program. And then we have a use, uh, contract to replace the Lombard Road, uh, contract, yeah, to replace Lombard Road, uh, pipe cover. Later that day, we request approval for a change order request, uh, Snyder'sburg Road. We also have, uh, um, Carroll County Circuit Court, uh, request approval to submit FY eighteen conflict resolution grant application. On later that evening, we have, um, Carroll County Chamber Connections Event, Focus North America in Hampstead with Commissioner Weaver and Howard. Friday, March thirty-first, uh, Marshall of the Battle of the Books at Manchester Valley High School, Commissioner Weaver. Saturday, April first, Tawney Town Lions Baseball Opening Day, Commissioner Wance, they let you throw the ball out?
First pitch.
First pitch, alright.
Yes, let me tell you a story.
No, no.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is this, is this competition going on here?
Did you not like my stuff?
On April the first, that was April Fool's Day, by the way. Twelve o'clock, Christian Farmers Outreach Luncheon, Commissioner Weaver, Fraser, Wance, Howard, and Rothschild. You guys are all Christian farmers?
No.
Um, one o'clock, the Eagle Scout Court of Honor Ceremony at Manchester, Commissioner Weaver, I'm gonna be busy. Uh, six o'clock, Carroll County School Bus, uh, Employee Safety and Recognition Banquet, Reese Fire Hall, Commissioner Weaver and Fraser. And Commissioner Wance, on April second, you have the WTR report. Moving ahead to April the-
One change on that. On Saturday, April first, at eight AM, I will be at the Breakfast for the Evangelical Child Fellowship. Evangelical Child Fellowship, uh, Saturday, April first, eight AM. And that is going to be held at Martin's West. Actually, it's Child Evangelical, uh, ECF, Evangelical Child Fellowship.
Is that Martin's?
Martin's West.
In Westminster or?
Actually, no, I'm sorry, it's Martin's West, excuse me, Martin's West in Baltimore, Dogwood Road, yes. I will be there from eight-thirty to eleven-fifteen on Saturday, April the first.
Okay, April the third, we start our first agency hearings at two-thirty. Two and a half hours on April the fourth, Legislative Update, Mr. Phil Hager. And then we have agency hearings for two hours in the morning, where we're followed with agency hearings at, no.
We're not having any more, um, legislative updates, so.
Okay.
Last April.
That's all?
That'll come off.
So we'll start at ten then?
Yeah, so, so the agents, uh, what? I guess so, I mean, unless we, I think the agency hearing is a good point of all schedule, so unless we need the extra hour.
And do we have seven hours of agency hearings?
Um, I guess, I don't know, I guess, I wouldn't come and tell them how many agency hearings we want, but, um-
Cause we're given, what are we giving? Because we're given, what are we given, twenty minutes, fifteen minutes?
Fifteen or so, yeah.
So that'd be a lot of-
Lot of agencies.
Lot of agencies.
So unless there's something you need to start earlier, I would assume we start some, uh, for election.
But you, you can confirm that we need that much time, 'cause, I mean, we should be hearing just for folks that have. Have they seen the recommended budget yet?
No, no one's seen the recommended budget.
So how do they know to sign up?
Well, they, they know whether what's recommended in their particular budgets. No one's seen the whole round of the budget, other than the UBS.
They worked with their budget analyst.
But they know because of their working with their budget analyst that if they ask for that-
What's being recommended for them, okay, all right.
Okay, April the fourth, and at four PM, we have Learning Advantage Partnership Reception, Winters Mill High School, Commissioner Weaver and Fraser. On April the fifth, Warfield Development Corporation Meeting, Commissioner Howard, Seniors on the Go Expo, nine o'clock. I think we're all probably be there.
I'll be there.
Yep.
Yeah, put me now.
Yep, add me to that, yep.
You're gonna probably dance again, aren't you?
Yeah, if you're watching.
At two-thirty, Economic Alliance of Greater Baltimore Meeting, Commissioner Wance. At six PM, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, Commissioner Fraser. Uh, April the sixth, Economic Outlook, uh, Portico St. John's Westminster, uh, all Commissioners will be attending at eight AM. We will have, uh, eleven o'clock, Commissioners Updates, Board with, uh, which the Commissioners sit. On, uh, the, the, on down the line, two o'clock, we will have the Annual Planning, uh, Housing Plan Presentation.
There's more agency hearings there, too. Did you see that? So, yeah.
Item two in the morning.
Right. Yeah, yeah, for another two hours, so.
I'm sure some of these-
I, I know what you're thinking, so, which is kinda scary.
Well, this is, I've-
We were gonna cut down, we're, I, I think there was some-
This is, this is-
This is probably cut down, 'cause I think last year we had almost like four days of them or something, didn't we?
Two weeks, yeah, at least four or five days of them.
Okay.
But we'll confirm with the budget that these are actual scheduled times. This is what was on Budget's, um, calendar-
Okay.
That they provide to us as we, you know, and, and if they don't need some of these times, we'll look at-
Okay.
On the April the sixth, the two fifteen, Chapter one fifty-six, Adequate Public Facilities and Concurrent Management. Uh, we have, uh, Gravity Sewage Phase Two, uh, Department of Public Works here. Uh, we have later on, uh, Influent Gravity Sewer Phase Two Engineering Inspection Services. Inspecting, never mind. Uh, going out, uh, later that day, uh, Carroll County Association of Railers Poster Contest and Proclamation. And then, uh, on April the eighth, uh, Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Grace Lutheran Church, Commissioner Fraser. And on April the ninth, I have the WTTR report. Um, oh.
The fourth, the fourth item, Roberta, is that the, uh, that's the issue with the assistant letter? Or that was raised by the person that-
Right, um, just in the next two weeks, Commissioners, you'll be receiving two briefings, um, that aren't recommendations necessarily of staff, um, that one official or another, for, because of contacts from outside have asked that staff brief them on, um, how things work or what the deal is. One is that case briefing, um, and, uh, that you'll have next week. Um, and the other is this, um, um, review of the Adequate Public Facilities ordinance and how it works with regard to, um, multi-unit zones. So, um, those, um, are issues that staff will be bringing to you to educate you as to how it all works. And then leaving, you know, to you to give them further direction if you so desire, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
First time you were talking about agency hearings, I came down, but you'd already moved on. And you started talking again, so I came down, you moved on, but I'll say it this time.
We, we had a bet as to how many times we could make you do that.
By, by the way, did you come out of the ceiling or something, 'cause I, did-
How do you come in here?
I don't know.
Just all shoes on.
Well, let's move on.
It's actually a duck running between my office and here. There is about half the time scheduled this year, as has been scheduled in the past. And we are, we are actually scheduling times for people now. Uh, so what we've put on your calendar, if we don't end up needing that much time, I mean, some of it won't happen, we don't, we don't know that yet. And, uh, some agencies get more time than most agencies, Public Works being the, the obvious example, because there's just so much to, to Public Works. But it, but it is less and, um, your calendar still might end up with a little bit less than what's showing now as we get everything on.
Okay. Mr. Alton?
Uh, Commissioners, Roberta, I have a concern I want to bring up to the Board, determine how the Board would like to handle this. Over the past year or so, I've become increasingly concerned that I find out that the county has filed legal actions, lawsuits or legal actions against citizens. And sometimes it seems to me that these lawsuits are being filed without the knowledge or approval of the Board of Commissioners. And in some of these cases, it seems to me there might have been an opportunity for us to intervene as, in our elected capacities with the constituents and perhaps bring about compliance or broker a settlement without the need for litigation. So I've become increasingly concerned, uh, that we are perhaps filing lawsuits that should be, really, uh, should be vetted with the Board of Commissioners so we can make a decision whether or not any individual Commissioner or Commissioners want to try to intervene and bring about a peaceful resolution without the need to go to court. And I think that, uh, we need to talk about whether or not we should instruct our staff or ask our staff to, or require our staff to vet these potential lawsuits with us before actually filing legal action. So we can give them a green light or a red light on whether to file or perhaps intervene. The question I have is, is I think we need to have this discussion, 'cause things are happening, I think, without our knowledge in multiple districts. Is that a discussion that we should have publicly, or is that a discussion we should have in closed legal session, uh, with our attorneys? One, a staff member recommended being closed legal, I, I actually tend to agree with that. But I do believe that this is a policy matter that, though, that we should consider discussing for, for, for a half hour or so and either a closed or open session, depending on the Board's pleasure.
My, my, um, if you're discussing individual lawsuits, that would be closed legal. If you're discussing when, um, your regulatory powers should be enforced or not, I would think that would be, uh-
Right, Roberta, I mean, they-
These are regulatory issues that staff has, has, you know, are moving along the process, you know, they're going through whatever steps prior to filing suit against, you know, whether it's a zoning violation or whatever it might be. And, um, and so, um, yeah, at that discussion, at what point, if at all, you, you, the Board wants to intervene in those or be aware of those or be put on notice of those, that's, I think that's a policy decision that we should have in, in open. If you want to discuss whether the county has filed suit against Joe Blow, uh, citizen or whatever, then that would be a point, yeah, if that makes sense.
So I, I, I expect that in this discussion, you might want to, the Board might want to see an example, too. I suppose we could, we could discuss the examples without disclosing any particular defendants or facts of a case.
But as, as, as I'm sure you're all well aware, the county has, um, various regulatory powers. Um, they go from zoning, school owner management, other, you know, et cetera. And then so, um, they, they run permits, inspections, different things. So they run a gamut of, of different, um, agencies within the county that have these regulatory powers and that, um, enforce them pursuant to the ordinances that are passed, um, by the Board of County Commissioners. So, um, that, I don't think we need any, any real examples. I would like to discuss that, I think you can discuss the regulatory powers that the county has as a whole and those agencies that, uh, enforce them and how they are enforced, without talking about any particular institute, in- instance.
So the question I have is, would the Board prefer to have this discussion in open or closed? I mean, I, I'm thinking, in some respects, it may need to be open if it's a general policy. On the other hand, it's an interesting question that our attorney might caution us. He says, well, if you're gonna adopt a policy that says you're not going to enforce until after, uh, uh, you know, you have a full moon and somebody plays a Star Spangled Banner, you might not want to telegraph that, because it becomes part of, perhaps, perhaps enforcement strategy. So I, I, I wasn't quite sure whether we should have this discussion, uh, open or closed.
You're talking about, I believe, when we're, I say it's a zoning problem and the person has been delivered got time and time again, some documentation that they have to correct zoning problem or allow us to get into inspected, or whatever hap- problem happens to be.
Whatever it might be.
And then the final remedy, because of nothing happening on that person's end, is for the county to put a lawsuit against us. You don't want us to review all of that before it's sent out? I mean, isn't that-
This is the topic of discussion. I don't want to have the discussion-
But I mean, that's what you're talking about.
The question, under what conditions do we want staff to move forward with automatic, uh, moving forward to legal action? Versus when would the Commissioners like an opportunity to perhaps intervene, perhaps as a constituent service? If there is a, if there's a dispute between the county and a resident?
If I may offer a suggestion, um, that, um, staff review for you, those staff members that have the regulatory authorities, um, review for you what those regulatory authorities are, um, and, um, and the, and the process that they follow today. And then, as a briefing. And then, um, you can decide after you receive that briefing, whether you want to go any further.
That's fine, that's, that's fine. I just think the Board should, 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 should know where we stand. 'Cause I, I've seen, over the last six years, a couple where I thought that, uh, a, a Commissioner could have probably intervened and avoided the need for legal action. And certainly, that's always the preference to avoid, uh, litigating against our own citizens when we can.
So I'll make that happen?
Thank you, Roberta. Is that okay, gentlemen?
Yep, yep, briefing.
Okay, any further business coming forward to the Board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.